Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, December 11, 2017. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise and then please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Gustino and Assistant Pastor Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is indeed an honor to stand here, not only tonight, but the times in the past. And, well, I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody. We're entering the time when the Lord came. I understand that the Bible says He's the Prince of Peace, and peace is a wonderful thing in our life. And we pray that God will bless not only all of you, but everybody in this city and our state, our nation around the world with a spirit of peace. I always like to acknowledge the mayor, the city council, and just include all of you. Some of you have been here for years, you've spent a lot of time, sacrificed a lot of hours for the purpose of governing our city, and I want you to know we appreciate that. We don't take it lightly. I think you ought to give yourselves a good hand tonight. I'd like for the chief, or not chief, but the captain, Stuckenholtz, to come and stand beside me. Also Perry Guido. And I have a great concern for the safety of our police officers and our firefighters. And we would just like to join with them tonight. And let's let them represent every firefighter and police officer across our metropolitan area. And let's pray for their safety and God's blessing upon them. We appreciate their services and the sacrifice of both of these departments. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you that we can stand here and honor you. We're thankful, God, for your word. We're thankful, Lord, in your word it says, "In all of our ways to acknowledge you and you would direct our paths." And we believe that. We ask you, God, tonight, to bless our mayor, all the city council members, everyone that's ministering to this city in any way. I pray for the safety of our police officers, our firefighters. Keep your hand upon this city, Lord, and we know that prayer makes a difference. We ask you, God, to give us peace at this time of the year. You came to bring us peace, and we pray that each one in every home would be blessed with peace, joy, and righteousness. Bless this meeting now, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, roll call, please.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Item two A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted the entry to the council chamber. Item three, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes, and advisory committee reports.
Item A is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Mayor, I would move that we strike items eight B and eight B one from our agenda tonight. These items are in violation of City Council Rule 17. They've remained in violation of Rule 17 for the last month. No attempt has been made to correct them, so they need to be stricken from the meeting so that we can conduct our meeting in accordance with the rules of the city council. Rule 17 states that any attempt to abolish a standing committee must be submitted by the mayor or a council member and must include a written report explaining the reason for disbanding a standing committee. None of these items were done, and this item needs to be removed from our agenda.
I'll second for discussion.
Do you have a second? A discussion on the discussion? Any discussion? See none? Say that again, Mr. Cook.
You're voting on the amendment to the agenda to remove that item.
No discussion, please vote.
Vote is four to two. Motion fails.
Thank you.
All right. Now we sit in violation of our rules, so how are we going to correct it?
I think the vote's been taken.
We sit in violation of the rules. I talked to the Attorney General's office, and we need to correct this before the meeting moves forward.
I don't see any problem. Attorney General, it doesn't have jurisdiction over this meeting.
So we're going to move forward in violation of the rules of the city council?
We move forward.
Item B is the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a city council member or a citizen so requests.
You didn't vote on the actual agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we had a motion. We have a second.
It failed, so now we're just voting on the amendment. Or, I'm sorry.
As, as, Mr. Burns.
As presented.
Mr. Burns.
I move to approve the agenda.
And we had a second.
Okay.
We had discussion. Is there any other questions or discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Now we're, item B?
Item B, approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council, will be enacted by one motion unless a city council member or a citizen so requests that it be removed from the consent agenda, in which case it will be included in its normal sequence on the agenda. Subitem one is approval of the minutes of the November 27, 2017 meeting of the city council. Item two, approval of claims. Item three, approval of applications for waivers of hunting regulations. Item four, approval of documents to release the city's lien for CDBG housing rehabilitation project at 2609 Olive Street. Item five, approving the acceptance of the deed for the city hall and BAE buildings from the Bellevue City Municipal Building Corporation. Item four, excuse me, six, LB 840 Committee Semiannual Report. Item seven, approving the appointment of Shelley Walker to the Police Officers Retirement Committee. Item eight, approving the appointment of Michael Perrin to the Planning Commission for a three-year term until August 2020. Item nine, approving the appointment of Tom Maruz to the Tree Board for a four-year term until May 2021. Item 10, approval of the permanent easement over part of Lot 10, Hidden Hills subdivision. And item 11, approval of a permanent easement over part of Lot 11, Hidden Hills subdivision. Mayor, council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Mr. Burns.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I would like to point out that there is an amendment we'd like to make, staff would like to make, to the claims. There is an item listed in the city council's portion of the claims that attributes an attendance at the Bellevue Public Schools Gala to Shannon. That was approved at the last meeting. This one should be for Mayor Sanders and charged to the mayor's office. Finance Department would like to have that correction made.
Just have somebody ask for that to be removed, the bills be removed, and vote on it separately.
Mr. Modri.
I move that we remove the claims, item two, from the consent agenda.
It's automatically removed.
You don't need the motion.
That's true.
So we have a motion and a second as?
Just removed.
Right. But we still are back to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Please, any questions? Discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then, item number four is approval of claims. Would appreciate the council amending the claims with that notation.
I would move to approve claims as amended by the city administrator.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item five, organizational matters. Subitem A is the election of city council president.
Mr. Hanson.
Would like to make a nomination for Mr. Modri to be the 2018 city council president.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Modri.
Item six is special presentation. Subitem A is the presentation of the pet advocacy program by the Nebraska Humane Society.
Do we have someone?
Kelly, sir?
Yep.
Kelly Brown, Director of Field Operations, speaking with the Nebraska Humane Society for this proposal. There's a proposal to introduce a new ordinance to the Bellevue City Code allowing what's called a pet avocation permit for pet owners. And basically, what that allows, the city currently has a limit on the number of dogs and cats that you can own in your residence. Right now, that limit is three, and that limit will stay at three unless you have what's called this pet avocation permit. The permit allows you to have four or more cats or dogs, but no more than five cats or five dogs, and no more than a total of six animals total. So having five dogs and one cat, or six cats and one dog, et cetera. The city of Omaha has had this ordinance in effect for over 10 years, and so we've had a chance to see how that works there. And right now, in Omaha, we have 579 active permits, and out of those permits, we see maybe one to two to three revocations a year. So revocations are not very common. Usually, they stem from incidents where the animals might have gotten loose from the home and caused an incident. Most recent revocations were citizens not staying at that number, choosing to go higher than the number of cats allowed, et cetera. There was another incident this year where a dog escaped a house where there was an active permit and attacked another animal. But we have not observed that that permit causes any sort of further violations than what would have happened there. That could happen if you have one dog, it could happen if you have three dogs, it could happen if you have five dogs. We do background checks on each resident before we allow them to proceed with that permit process. Any person who has citations, you know, history of citations for animals running loose or becoming a nuisance to the public, barking, et cetera, you know, pets defecating all over yards, things like that, anything that we feel is going to be a nuisance to the neighborhood, we will not approve that permit. If we do approve a permit and an animal goes beyond the property and causes an issue after that permit is effective, or if we see a lot of issues with dogs becoming a nuisance to neighbors, we will revoke that permit if we issue them citations and there is a conviction in a court of law. So we see a lot of success with this ordinance. We do have a pretty strict inspection process. All animals have to be in good health at the time of inspection. All pets have to be housed predominantly indoors, so we don't allow, you know, dogs that are sitting outside on chains and things like that where they can bark and disturb neighborhood peace. There has to be adequate shelter, food, and water provided for those animals. There does have to be a fully fenced enclosure for the animals while they're outside, so that does prevent escape. We check for any odors present when we're doing our inspections. We check to make sure that there's no excessive amount of pet waste and that the owner's being responsible of keeping that cleaned up. And we see if there's any issues with numbers of pets directly causing a violation of the city ordinance otherwise. So we are requesting that maybe that move forward here in the city of Omaha, or excuse me, the city of Bellevue, to allow residents here who are responsible pet owners and who could maybe house one to two more pets than what is currently allowed, to give them that opportunity to keep those animals here as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want clarification. I think I understood what you said, but as far as the numbers, you're saying right now it's three cats or dogs, any mixture of?
Yeah.
Cats or dogs up to three.
That's a combination, yeah.
And that mixture goes to four and five.
Mm-hmm.
But at six, they all must be dogs or they all must be cats, or what happens at six?
The permit allows you to have four or five more cats or dogs, but you cannot have a total of six combinations. So you could have five dogs and one cat, so that's your sixth animal. Or you can have six cats and one dog, but you can't have a mixture of, you know, like five cats and five dogs. That's jumping the number up to 10. And so the six would be your cap between cats and dogs.
You would do three, three?
Yeah.
Or, okay, okay. I just misunderstood.
Yes.
And then you would follow up on these as normal, any type of complaints?
Correct.
And what would trigger where maybe this permit would be revoked or some type of penalty?
That's a good question. We do, in Omaha, we do one inspection, and that's before we allow the permit. We don't really have the manpower to do inspections on each of these every single year, but if we do receive a complaint from a neighbor upset about barking dogs, too many animals, waste, anything, we will go out to the property and request a reinspection. If the person either refuses the reinspection, or we find violations that we end up issuing citations for for city code violation, and that person is convicted in court, then that would be grounds for revocation of that permit.
And, and to go through the process, it's $100 the initial fee, and then it's $50 every year?
Yeah. $50 is the renewal fee, $100 is the initial inspection.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Shannon.
So what difference would it make if you had six dogs, or if you had five dogs and a cat? You still have six animals.
You do, but that's the, the permit is allowing you to have up to that number rather than just keeping you at three.
I just wanted to understand why we're, we're saying you can have up to six animals, but you can't have six dogs?
Um, six dogs is a pretty excessive number. Even in Omaha, they cap it at, you know, a certain number. So, yeah. Six dogs, I think, would increase the amount of, you know, barking and pet waste outside and things like that, so I think that's why they limit that at five.
Okay. And is there any coordination between your agency and the city so that if code enforcement ends up going out on a call, that they would know that this person has a permit for the extra animals?
That is another thing that was added to this ordinance, is the, they moved the numbers restricted violation to the Bellevue City Code for Animal Control. Currently, it's in code enforcement, so it'd be moved to animal control ordinances, but we could definitely coordinate with code enforcement and send them copies of any pet avocation permits that we have, so that way they're aware of them.
It would seem like some kind of process should be developed for that.
If there was a complaint, we would not refer it to code enforcement, we would go directly to the Humane Society with whom we have a contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Kelly. I guess you, you stated that to get the permit at all, first, there's a background check?
Correct.
So people who have had violations in the past?
Yeah. We wouldn't make the permit optional to a person who has previous convictions of animal control ordinances.
Okay.
And then if anything were to happen following the permit issuance, such as a dog getting loose and biting, that would be revoked once they go to court if they're convicted.
And then, in addition to that, then you have the inspection, right?
Yes.
So, I don't know, is it fair to say that in general, people who get the pet avocation permits are probably your more responsible pet owners?
I would definitely agree with that. We tend to have fewer problems with the homes in Omaha that are permitted versus the homes that are not permitted. Most of the homes where we have animal bite incidents, animals running at large, biting people, attacking other pets, or barking, are usually from homes that aren't permitted and have had no inspection.
Thank you. Yeah. I had a constituent bring this up to me and let me know about this program, and looked into it and thought it might be good here, so, thank you.
Mr. Han, oh, Mr. Sullivan.
Just two questions. The enclosure, fence enclosure, would that also include an underground fence enclosure?
I think that would be recognized because it is a recognized form of restraint, which is physically stopping a dog, unless there was an addition to the ordinance that omitted those.
And then my other question is, and I understand a constituent, Mr. Modri, has brought this up, but has there been some compelling voices outside of a feud in Bellevue that have requested this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. It just kind of reminds me of a story quite, not too long ago, when there was 10 councilmen here, and about the same, Mr. Preister, I think you were on there when they had 10, and they cut it down to three, or to six. And I remember at the same time, they're going to say you can only have three dogs. I remember writing a letter to the paper saying, "I think honestly, if it was three councilmen, everybody could have 10 dogs, we'd have a better city going on." I thought that was pretty funny at the time.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Brown? See none? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Item seven is, subitem, liquor license, subitem A, Dyna Inc., Doing Business as Dynamart, application for a Class D liquor license, off sale only, at 1007 Galvin Road South, and Neil Armani as manager.
Yes, I am Neil Armani. I'm representing Dynamart.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Is there a comment you'd like to make?
As long as I get a liquor license, that's fine.
Go ahead and sign in. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone else that would like to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see no one getting up. We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the Dyna Inc., Doing Business as Dynamart, application for a Class D liquor license, off sale only, at 1, or 007 Galvin Road South, and Neil Armani as manager.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri.
Thank you. Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting from both the liquor license items for religious and personal reasons.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Subitem B is Willow Springs Bottling Company, doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart for a special designated license for a holiday awards party at Bellevue University, John B Mueller Admin Services Building, 1000 Galvin Road South, on February 3, 2017, from 3:30 PM to 12 AM.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from Willow Springs Bottling Company? See none?
Mr. Sobchak was ill today.
Okay.
So he couldn't be here.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Just clarification, Mayor. I might have said 2017, it's 2018.
Thank you. See no one coming forward to speak. Close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, Willow Springs Bottling Company, doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart, special designated license for a holiday awards party at Bellevue University, John B Mueller Administrative Services Building, at 1000 Galvin Road South, on February 3, 2018, from 3:30 PM to 12 AM.
Mr. Burns.
I second that.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Item A is ordinances for adoption, third reading, subitem A, ordinance number 3888, amending sections 5.24, 5.27, and 5.28 of the Bellevue zoning code ordinance regarding outdoor storage of automobiles, boats, and recreational vehicles.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 3888.
Mr. Burns.
Second that.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Subitem, or, subitem B is ordinance number 3889, relative to the city of Bellevue Cemetery's compliance to state statute. And subitem one is resolution number 2017-24, adopting the cemetery rules. Mayor and council members, following the public hearing at the last meeting, staff met with the city attorney, and we put in several amendments to clarify and to improve the rules that, after hearing from the citizens and from the council. Those items were listed in a memorandum that I sent to the council last week. We would ask for the rules to be adopted and the ordinance to be passed.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve ordinance number 3898?
Eight.
Eight, eight, nine.
Three, eight, eight, nine.
Three, eight, nine, oh.
Three, eight, eight, nine.
Three, eight, eight, nine. Doesn't help. You're right.
We have a motion. Mr. Burns.
I second that.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Sullivan.
Mayor and council, I just want to make a clarity on that. That resolution that Councilman Shannon had cited, that has since been revised twice, and it's my fault, I should have caught that earlier, but I'll read that to you now. It has nothing in regard to it having to be the mayor or the councilman. Any studies or subjects not addressed by the city council as committee of the hall may be referred to an ad hoc committee. All ad hoc committees shall be appointed by the mayor with city council confirmation. The committee will be given a purpose and an outline of objectives. Upon completion of the assigned task or specified date, a report will be filed, and the committee will disband. There isn't anything specific about eliminating the committee by that process, and apologize for not finding that sooner.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Shannon.
I, I know we're going to take these one at a time, but I, I think that the rules of the cemetery have worked for the city of Bellevue for 160 years, and I don't know why we need to be in a hurry to do this. We're getting the, the changes to the rules last minute. We didn't get the red line copy of the changes to the rules till Friday. And that, that kind of gets to something we're going to discuss later about us having to rush through all these things. I'm not sure why we can't slow down a little bit and take our time to go through these rules. These rules worked just fine till we got an employee that didn't want to follow them. And I think we have more of an employee problem than a, than a rules problem. And, you know, if, you know, we can't make our employees follow the rules, the rules are the rules till they're changed, and that...
Mr. Shannon, I don't think discussing an employee at a council meeting...
I did not name anyone.
Nope, but...
Nope. But that is the problem we're, we're having here, is that we have an employee that's refusing to follow the rules.
It is your opinion.
And so these rules have worked just fine up until his hiring, and so that, that's kind of the problem we're facing. So I think that we need more time to look at these. I don't think that rushing into the rules change is in the best interest of the public. We're taking out a lot of good information. It's not being re, re, put out in any kind of a pamphlet or informational source. This is information that's not available anywhere else. So yes, maybe it doesn't belong in the rules, but it belongs in some kind of an informational pamphlet that should be put out for people that are going to be patrons of the cemetery. And so I, I think there's more thought and more work that can be done on this.
Mr. Manjimelli.
In fact, Mr. Roberts, would you confirm that the, the existing rules have been a problem for a long period of time?
The problem with what the rules are now is the enforcement of it, and which, which one has the correct information or doesn't have the correct information? That's where we've had the problem all this time, is they're really, they're unenforceable because they don't really follow the guidelines of what the rules are.
And you heard, council members, you heard last meeting from the city attorney's office about that enforceability issue. These rules are being advanced so that there is better control and better information available to the public. And once adopted, these, these rules will be published in a pamphlet form so that everybody in the community is aware of what the rules are.
And that is correct. And the way the rules that we've now established, and they actually spell out that, a better guideline than what they were in the past.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that the genesis of these rules changes and of this ordinance came about because of an issue with flags and flag holders. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm wondering, then, why are we putting in a restriction against the Second Amendment into the new rules? How, how did that come about?
Well, the state law allows the city to control where firearms are allowed, and that was discussed at the last meeting. The, for a 21-gun salute, for example, for a veteran... that was discussed at the last meeting. For a 21-gun salute, for example, for a veteran, that would be allowed. Of course, that's not a live round that would be fired. But, Tim, do you have any comment on that?
I don't believe the prohibition on firearms, with the exception of military salute, was, is anything new in these rules. And as Mr. Manjumelli...
It is. It wasn't out there before.
Okay, well, then I've mistaken on that. But, as Mr. Manjumelli said, I mean, there's a sign on the door of this building that prohibits firearms, and the state can regulate firearms, and municipalities can regulate firearms in their public buildings.
And they're banned in parks?
Yes.
Already?
Public facilities, I should say, not just buildings.
Any further discussion? Mr. Shannon, or Mr. Sullivan?
Again, that is an administrative recommendation. You can always make amendments to the ordinance with respect to that issue. Secondly, Mr. Manjumelli, you had mentioned that you had gone back with Tim to go over some of these things. So, is the ordinance that we have in our packet tonight different from when we had it on first reading?
The ordinance is not different. There are some minor amendments that we made to the rules.
Okay.
After hearing testimony from the public and council members last meeting.
But the ordinance reads the same.
Ordinance is the same.
Great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Preister?
Just a comment. We heard last time that there was really only one issue here, and I would tend to agree with that, and that was the issue of the flags. And that's a philosophical difference to have them, to have all of them, but it has to be fair. Mr. Hawley himself, who served admirably on the cemetery board, said that he counted over 60 different items in the rules and regulations that were in the original that are still here. So essentially, we're cleaning up language. We're taking some of the history, and that really should be in the historical society, or as Mr. Manjumelli says, that is information that can be put in other information. I see this as cleanup. It's not really anything new, and there is a difference of philosophy. I don't think that's going to change in a week or two weeks, and I really don't think that any employee of the city should be denigrated in this or any other meeting when they're doing the best job that they can, when they're trying to protect the city, when they are trying to do what's fair for everybody, and they are doing a good job. Thank you.
Mr. Modri, did you have a comment? Mr. Cook?
Tim, I might need some clarification. My understanding of the state law, and being a police officer for many, many years, and my understanding is that the state law on the carry concealed allows a city to designate places where you cannot take a weapon. I'm not saying I'm in support of it or not, but is that true? So, they can regulate and say, "You can't put, you can't bring a weapon to a park. You can't bring a weapon to this building, and we have that authority."
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. So, you know, okay, I just wanted to make sure that the city has the authority to say, "You can't bring a gun in this building," or a city park, or some other property the city owns, and that is in state law that gives us that authority.
I did not do particular research on that issue, but, I mean, it's my general understanding that the state gives that authority, but I can certainly revisit that if it's, if there's a challenge to that.
Okay. I, well, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Modri?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know. It seems like there's still maybe some questions or some items that may need some cleaning up or clarification. Mr. Shannon mentioned perhaps delaying this. I don't know. I may be inclined to go that way as well. If I voted tonight, I'd have to vote no, of what I see here right now. I would like to propose, and I guess I can make a motion, that we, I hate to establish a committee, but that we establish a committee of perhaps some council members, three council members, to look at this and come up with something within, you know, a two, three-month period, and come back and see if we can come with a clean set of rules for us to vote on.
And I would second that. At least we'd have some time to look at these rules that we just got on Friday.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Hanson?
You know, it's kind of complicated, but I just got back from Virginia, and I met with the head of, the new head of the League of Municipalities of Virginia, excuse me, of Georgia, and has 540 different cities that are there, of which he manages at maybe 50 or 60 cemeteries. Within all these, he has a board of directors of 65 mayors and works on it, and I kind of talked to him about this, and he said, "You know what? When somebody in Georgia, I think they give them a deed to the lot. I think here they give a certificate for the lot, but it's kind of one and the same thing." And I think what happens when a family gets that, I think it's very difficult for us as a city council or a committee or anybody to limit their free speech and their expressions for what they want for their loved ones that are there, whether that's a certain kind of flag or not a certain kind of flag. And what he told me, he said, "You know what, John? You know, when it comes to flags," he said, "We do all flags or no flags. Now, once you start saying, 'You can have this flag,' or 'I don't like the Irish flag,' or 'I don't like this flag,' it's a huge problem." And he said, "It becomes a legal problem." So, the thing with flags, I think, is more of a legal situation, but I do believe that when we start to mandate or control what the feelings are of people that have purchased a lot there for their loved ones and for themselves or whatever, and start to do that, I think we run into any problems. I don't have any more problems looking at the rules and things like that because I don't think you can make a rule for every single thing that we're looking at, because somebody else is going to come up and say, "Hey, we got another rule, and we can't do this, and what about that?" But I think it's just good common sense. Now, if there's stuff floating around there, and I think the rules, you know, you can have certain things around holidays and then take them down, and the maintenance and stuff like that. So, you know, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. You know, I would probably vote for the ordinance, but I also don't have a problem if you want to take a, so what? The cemetery's since, what, 1856 or '7? So, if we waited a couple more weeks, you know, that's not that long. So, I have no problem with going along with that.
Mr. Preister?
I appreciate the comments and what is happening in other parts of the country as well. I think if there was something specific that we wanted to change, there would be reasons for laying it over. I haven't heard anything that needs to be changed. I've heard from Mr. Hawley that 60 of the rules and the things that we're doing are all the same thing that we're already doing. So, I don't see, I mean, if there's a valid reason to lay it over, we lay it over. But I don't see anything other than one philosophical, possibly two, differences, and that's not going to change between now and a week, or a month, or six months. So, if there's a specific reason and something here that needs to be changed, I'd like to hear it. Otherwise, I don't see why we just drag this on and on.
With that, can we call the vote on the amendment? To delay. Please vote.
Vote is four to two.
Thank you. And then the vote for the original.
The way I understood the motion was that you were forming a committee.
Yeah.
Not to look at the rules.
Can you repeat the...
What I have written is that it's a motion to establish a three council member committee to come back in three months with rules. That's what I've written down, but that's rules only, not this ordinance.
So, we still vote on the ordinance?
I think what she's getting at is we would have to have a motion to delay action on the ordinance for three months as well, which is not there. While I'm speaking, I guess the other thing to keep mindful of is these rules can always be changed again, and we constantly go through a process of updating and amending our ordinances and our rules, which, and my only comment with respect to this is I haven't heard anything specific as to what cleanup needs to be done. And from that standpoint, yes, public entities can prohibit firearms in their public facilities. That is law.
So then, we still have the ordinance to vote on. Is that correct?
The ordinance is still there unless you also make a motion to postpone it consistent with the three-month period. Well, it doesn't have to be consistent, but I assume that's what you want to do, consistent with the three months on the committee.
All right. I'll make that motion that we delay the ordinance three months, bring it back in three months with the rules, that we form the committee, and we come back with a more cohesive product that we've had time to fully vet, not something that we've just been handed on Friday.
Second.
We have a second by Modri. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is four to two. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nine is ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Subitem A is ordinance number 3893, rezoning lots 22, 23, 26, and 27, Spring Ridge, and lots 1 and 2, Spring Ridge, replat 1, from RS 72 to RD 60. The applicant is Orchard Valley Inc. General location is South 21st Street and Gindy Drive.
And as the council may consider suspending the rules and passing this ordinance following closure of the public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so. Welcome.
Welcome. Melvin Sudbeck, 16255, Woodland Drive. What we're proposing tonight is Spring Ridge subdivision, is a subdivision that we platted about two, two and a half years ago. It was a lengthy process to get the project platted. Went through numerous layouts, changes, adding property, just to try to meet all the requirements and everything that was intended for this project. We have six lots that we had an oversight on my part that got included in the larger zoning on the west side of 21st Street. When we look at the plat of these lots, we can see that they're consistent with lots to the east side of 21st Street, which are smaller lots. When we originally platted them, I'd say it was an oversight on my part on the submittal, so we're just kind of trying to come back and get these included on the east side. They are smaller. They face the smaller lots. We don't feel that a larger lot is going to be any more beneficial in this location. We'd, the direction that they face and they're acquired, or they face to, we really feel they need to be on the east side and not on the larger lots, so. The difference, the difference that we're doing in the two zonings basically is a seven-foot side yard to a five-foot side yard. We need that five-foot side yard to be consistent with the product that we're building on the east side. If we can't get that zoning change to happen, then we're just going to have to build a narrower house on those lots.
Are there any questions? Mr. Shannon?
I wanted to thank Mr. Sudbeck for taking the time to meet with me on site and explain the whole situation. I've looked at it on site. What he's doing is very reasonable. These lots face lots that will be the same size and will have the same kind of houses on them, so this is a very logical change. It's probably something that should have been caught when this went through the first time, but it was missed, so this is just a fix. So, I'm in favor of what he's doing. It's very consistent and very, in keeping with what he's building, so.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Sudbeck? Do you have a question?
No. If the council is going to suspend the rules, let me read the title of the ordinance. It's ordinance number 3893, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about South 21st Street and Gindy Drive, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Shannon, did you have a question? Thank you. If there's any others that would like to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Shannon?
I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and vote on this item tonight.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri?
Yeah, I just want to know the reason for suspending the rules, why this can't go two weeks more? Or, yeah, it's going to be four weeks now, isn't it? Yeah.
Kind as money.
I would answer that. I've also talked to Mr. Sudbeck, and, you know, went through planning, so there was a month there. They were trying to work things out and stuff, so I believe he's got a lot sold, possibly a second one, and we're talking, we're probably delaying this already a couple of months. So, normally, I agree, it should be an emergency, but I think in this case, we're not going to have another meeting for a month, and he's really ready to move, and putting a new house in our city is what we like.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Burns?
So, well, I do have a question for Chris and/or maybe Joe, but in our packet, the planning commission recommended the approval, but...
Oh, yeah. You're right.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the planning commission recommended approval, but the department did not. Could you just maybe explain that to you? Was it smaller setbacks? Basically, is...
This was originally presented to the planning commission, the council, as shown in your packet with the colored diagram, with the RD 60 on the east side of 21st Street. 21st Street would be the boundary between the RD 60 smaller lots and the RS 72 larger lots. Again, it was presented in a color exhibit to the council. Mr. Sudbeck's attorney came up and reiterated that in the public hearing, that 21st Street would be the boundary, and the planning department just felt that, based on what was presented and represented during the application process, that that should be maintained.
Mr. Cook?
I went to the planning commission meeting, and they had discussion for about, I'd say, 45, 50 minutes, and it was very good discussion. And what stuck out for me was, they were looking at, what stuck out for me was that one of these lots was non-conforming, and it was missed by, I believe, Mr. Sudbeck's engineer. It was missed by the city, and it went through as a non-conforming lot. So, we're fixing that. We're resolving that. These homes that he wants to build on these lots that were asking for the zoning change, they do face the smaller homes. You know, it's not facing the big homes. The lot size are similar to the RD 60, which is what he wants to put on them, the zone change. The six lots are very similar. The other lots are bigger, which would get bigger homes. And I just think it was missed because I don't think the developer would have sold a lot and started building on it if he knew that, "Hey, I can't build this house on this lot." So, I think it was done intentionally, unintentionally, sorry. I think it was missed, and it was probably a little bit missed by the city too, with a non-conforming lot. It puts all the lots into conformance, and he can move forward now on building the homes that he wants to build on that lot.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 389, no, 3893.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 10.
Item 10 is an ordinance for introduction, first reading. Ordinance number 3894, an ordinance to amend Section 6-0 and to add Section 6-23 and 6-47 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to animals. To repeal Section 6-0 of the Bellevue City Code as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be on January the 8th. Item 11, public hearing on matters other than ordinances.
Subitem A is a public hearing on the event license application of Mack Throwers for the Nebraska Celtic Festival to be held April 7 and 8, 2018, from 7:00 AM to sunset at Hayworth Park. Been a request from the applicant to continue this. Was there, not Sabrina?
Right. They are still in talks with the police department to make sure they have everything they need, and parks as well.
Do we need to make this for a date certain, so we aren't...
He just asked for the first meeting in January. He should be, thought he would be ready by then.
January 8? Okay.
I make a motion that we carry this over to January 8, then.
Second.
Second, Mr. Mojri. Discussion or questions? It will be under public hearing, right? It would be under the same. Discussion or questions? See none, vote, please.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item B.
Item B is a public hearing on the CDBG 2016-2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and subitem 1 is Resolution Number 2017-28, approving the 2016-2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Thank you. Now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so. Abby, do you have a few words you'd like to say? Came all the way out here. Please do.
Good evening. Tonight's agenda is the end-of-the-year report for HUD, the caper. This just shows HUD what we've done this year, how much we've spent, and what we've accomplished. It's due 90 days after the end of the program year, so by the end of December. If you guys have any questions on anything in the report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? See none? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so at this time on this item. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Abby. Any resolutions? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve Resolution 2017-28, approving the CDBG 2016-2017 caper.
Mr. Burns.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is five to one. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, resolutions.
Subitem A is Resolution Number 2016-27, repealing Resolution Number 2017-12.
26.
2017-26, repealing Resolution Number 2017-12.
Have a motion? No motion? Motion fails. Mr. Mojri.
I move that we approve Resolution 20726 for discussion.
And I would ask that I be recused from this discussion, so that, because I have a financial interest in the property.
We also have a city code that requires that when you have a conflict of interest, that you are to leave the council chambers.
Do we have a second? See none, motion fails. Move on to 12B.
Item 12B, Resolution Number 2017-27, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the labor agreement with the Civilian Employees Association of Bellevue for the 2017-2021 period.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution 2017-27, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the labor agreement with the Civilian Employees Association of Bellevue, 2017-21, as read.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? Mr. Mojri.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of good things in this agreement, a lot of things that have improved and gotten better for the city, which is good for us. One item on, well, I have a couple items, actually, but one item on wages, with the reduction in the number of... My brain went, what's the term? Steps? Yeah, steps. How does that work out for us now, going forward with our current employees, as far as pay raises that they're going to be getting as a result of that?
The reduction in the steps was based on comparability, and the agreement provides that the employees will get an adjustment to the closest step, closest new step, that provides them a... I'm trying to remember. Rich Severson, are you in the outer room? Please get him. I want to make sure that you have the exact amount, councilman.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
One item which was very good for us was on the healthcare, picking that up for employees after their service. They now require five years' service with the city, whereas before, they could just be here a year and, you know, get everything before.
That was part of the give and take.
Yep, very good.
They say he's on his way.
From where?
He should just be down the hall.
He watches his hand. He's grabbing something out of his office. He should be here a second. Here he comes.
Probably grabbed his coffee.
Mr. Severson, the question was asked about the reduction in the number of steps and how that affects the current employees and their wage rate, and you did the analysis on that, and I didn't want to give the council misinformation, so the pay plan that you prepared provides for what? They would move to the next step in the scale, closest to what? Do you recall?
HR is...
Not here either.
Not here. If I recall, they moved to the next step of... This one was different than some of the others. So without HR here to talk to them, I'd have to go back and take another look.
Okay. We can get you that. It does not negatively impact any employees.
What was the cost in this contract of doing that?
$138,000 from the current run rate.
Yeah. I was just looking at the pay scale, the new pay scale, you know, with the renewed steps and that sort of thing. The existing one could take the lowest step on the lowest grade to the new lowest step on the lowest grade. It's about a 26.8% increase in that hourly wage. At the very highest one, it's about a 16.9% increase, so I hope we're not giving those kind of...
The city used a comparability study.
I know.
Look at those.
Do you know what the array was that was used?
I do.
Okay.
I'd have to defer to the city administrator to talk about the cities in the array.
We can provide that information, councilmember. If you remember from our closed session that we had several months ago, we had approximately 10 cities that we used. We'll provide those cities to you.
You know, we don't see those kind of increases in wage in the civilian world, so...
I agree.
Another item, and something to work on for the next round, longevity increases and step increases. You know, you get a lot of bumps, right?
I agree.
And it says they may get a step increase, but I think that word "may" is used kind of liberally there. It's pretty much automatic, is it not?
I would disagree, councilmember. The department heads and their supervisors do a good job of evaluating employee performance, and we continue to do that. We're looking at a new evaluation form, which will be more illustrative of the employee's performance and whether they're earning that cost of living adjustment or that merit increase. The longevity is an issue that, again, for comparability purposes, we did not change because there was no need for any change in that, based on the comparable cities. But the identification or assertion that wage adjustments are automatic is inaccurate.
Thank you. That's good, that you're working to improve that.
Any other questions, Mr. Mojri? I see none. Any question, Mr. Shannon?
Yeah, the employees that are getting these 26% raises right now, are these the same employees that got 30% raises three years ago? I don't believe so. I think there were just a couple of jobs, job in the city, and I think some of the higher ones were actually some part-time people, so.
Thank you.
It was at the lower end of that grade scale.
Rich, would you like, would you take a minute to describe the process that you used to develop the pay plan, using the low-end salaries with the high end, and how you computed those?
Okay, the comparability study gave us some minimums and some maximums, that we then decided how many steps there would be in this pay plan, and then it's simply math from the minimum to the maximum. And it's not just divided by 10 steps, it's the same percentage increase. So the dollar amount of the increase on each of those steps increases a little bit because they get the same increase. But for each grade line, it may be a different progression.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Shannon?
We have representatives of the CEAB in attendance this evening, if you have any questions of them.
I think we're good. Any further questions? See none? Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second already? Yeah. So, no further questions, please vote.
Vote is four to two.
Thank you. 13A.
Current business, 13A, is request for permission to purchase Collective Data, which is a web-based fleet and asset management software system for the fleet department in the amount of $34,020. This is continued from the last meeting. Fleet manager Todd Jaros is here, if you have questions.
Hi, I'm Todd Jaros, Fleet Superintendent.
Are there any question for Mr. Cook?
I'll make a motion to...
Please do.
I mean, what I believe from our last meeting was, was there any comparables? Did they look at anything else? We got that in a memo from, I don't remember if it was from Mr. Jaros or Mr. Roberts, but they talked about two other comparisons, and I think they did a general comparison of some of the other programs. So I think, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Collective Data, which is a web-based fleet and asset management software system for the fleet department in the amount of $34,020.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions?
Nope, I just want to say thank you for enhancing the packet we got, showing us the comparisons, and giving us a much more complete package.
Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13B is acceptance of the low bid and approve, then authorize the mayor to sign the contract for demolition of structures at 12709 South 28th Avenue.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make this motion to send my ward. I make a motion, we accept the low bid and approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the demolition of structures at 12709 South 28th Avenue.
Second.
There is an option in the package that needs to be addressed.
We have a second by Mr. Preister. Mr. Mojri.
Mr. Shannon brought up the option. There's an option in there to remove the pole and the sign and the vacuum station, I guess. Is that... Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
I do recall that, and so I would say to include that, and the total price was $15,018. Is that correct, Mr. Roberts?
I think...
Mike Christensen is here.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
With the increase, it's $15,018.
And your recommendation was to take that option?
I think the intent was to clean up the lot and just finish it off.
Just for clarification, are you talking about taking down the brand-new pole sign that was just erected? The one with the Big John sign on it?
Mr. Shannon, I don't believe you can talk on this item. You have a financial interest in this. You need to recuse yourself, just like you did the last time. City attorney's coming in the room, maybe he can provide clarification.
Maybe he can answer my question now.
Is there a question?
There's an option on the demolition for them to remove the brand-new pole sign on the property. I'd ask why.
On 13B.
Yeah. Well, we had the resolution in July of, July 24, I believe, called for demolition of structures on the property, and so I believe that all that occurred there, when that bid was put out, as Hymas broke that down into sections, including removal of the concrete and something else. So I believe Mr. Christensen's recommendation is that we remove the buildings and including whatever the $1,100 item was on there. Let me find that here. Let me find that here. So, yeah, I believe there was a base price of thirteen thousand eight twenty-eight, and there was an addition broken down of removing the driveway and site paving as well as light pole, sign base, or vacuum. And I believe it's a recommendation by Mr. Christensen to remove the light pole, sign base, or vacuum station. It's additional eleven-hundred and ninety dollars, but that's up to the council as to what it wants to do.
Mr. Sullivan, I do have another question. Does Councilmember Shannon need to leave?
That was my next statement.
Okay.
But yes, again, there's a conflict here, and you should be leaving the room pursuant to our rules.
I'm going to abstain from voting either way, so.
I understand that, but the problem is, is the reason why we have people removed from the room is because there's still an appearance that you have influence on the council when they're making a decision on something in which you have a personal interest in.
Personally, when you see the vote, you'll know I don't.
So again, that's, that's your option. If you want to leave that, not go on with that additional item, you don't need to go on with that additional item.
Mr. Preister.
I believe that was included in Councilman Cook's motion, and I made the second, and I seconded for that reason, too.
That, what happened was when I made the motion, I just read what was on the agenda, and then it was seconded, and then it was brought up about that. And then I included the option of, of the almost twelve hundred dollars for a total of fifteen thousand eighteen dollars.
Yeah, you're good to vote unless there's any further discussion.
Any other discussion? Call the vote. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thirteen C.
Item C is approval of change order number two for the American Heroes Park Phase Five project in the amount of thirty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars forty cents, which is split with the Papewell Missouri River Natural Resources District on a fifty-fifty basis.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We accept the approval of a change of order number two for, in the amount of thirty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty cents, to be split fifty-fifty with PMR and RD.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none. Please vote.
All voted yes.
You?
Item D is approve and authorize the mayor to sign task order two thousand seventeen dash two from Leo A. Daily Company in the amount not to exceed two hundred twenty thousand dollars to be paid from the LB eight forty program funds.
What are the wishes of council? Mr. Thomas, Mr. Burns?
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign task order twenty seventeen dash two from Leo A. Daily in an amount not to exceed two hundred twenty thousand dollars to be paid out of the LB eight forty program funds.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion, Mr. Cook?
Real quick, Mr. Roberts, the, the information we've got, or Mr. Burks, the information we got has referred to it would be then shovel-ready?
It will be in the spring. Once, this, this item is one of the checklist items to make it shovel-ready after the engineering documents are completed, and there are other due diligence projects being conducted right now by Sarpy County Economic Development under a different agreement. And then once those are all complete, it will be certified shovel-ready.
Is there any addition, do you foresee any additional costs to the city after this project here that will get it shovel-ready? So, in other words, my question is, after we do, if this vote goes yes, and we vote to do it, and Sarpy County and the other entities do their things, will it be shovel-ready, or will there be additional expenses to the city?
I know of no other cost to get it there.
I mean, I'm glad we're moving these things forward.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to know when we got to the point to where we can tell a potential developer, we are at that point of being shovel-ready.
Actually, I think someone, if we had a buyer and they wanted to develop, they could now. But we would have to switch them over to the new sewer system. We could hook them up temporarily to, depending on the flows, we could hook them up temporarily to the sewer system that serves the Champions Baseball Village.
Sure.
And then we could use that temporarily, depending on the flows. But once this new system is put in and it's designed for the industrial park, we can hook them up to that. But to answer your question, I know of no other expenses related to the due diligence or planning to get it shovel-ready.
And I just, I'm glad to hear that because I want to get to that point.
We're, we're very close. Very close.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Burke? Thank you. Any questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item E, approve and execute the funding approval agreement for three hundred eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars in FY two thousand seventeen CDBG funding.
Give me a motion, Mr. Burns.
I move to approve and execute the funding approval agreement for three hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars in fiscal year two thousand seventeen CDBG funding.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
The vote is four to two.
Thank you.
Item F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement between BAE Systems, Inc. and the Bellevue Police Department.
Mr. Burns?
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement, memorandum agreement between BAE Systems, Inc. and the Bellevue Police Department.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Item G, approve, an approval of an agreement with US Cellular to install a bidirectional amplifier to improve the cell phone coverage inside the building at fifteen hundred Wall Street.
I'd move to approve item thirteen G.
Second.
Motion. Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Item H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the One Master Agreement with Zoll Data Systems.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the One Master Agreement with Zoll Data Systems.
Mr. Burns?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
You?
Item I, discussion on city council agendas, submission procedures, and timeliness, and city code sections two dash two-nine and two dash three-zero.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, I added this to the agenda because we keep getting things very late before a meeting, and I am looking at resubmitting two dash twenty-nine and two dash thirty to kind of streamline some things and put some things in an orderly fashion so that we need to decide how many days we want to have this packet. I mean, we've, we've had packets where there are five hundred pages and we have four days to get through them, and we need to say, okay, we're going to have it five days. We're going to have it six days. There needs to be a set of rules, and it needs to be followed. Right now, everything's supposed to be on the agenda two weeks before the meeting. That's not happening. So we need to back up and say, okay, if we want to have it for six days, Sabrina needs two days. The city needs to hold its meeting here so that we can have this, so that we get the information timely, so that we're not cramming to get through things in four days. We can't do a proper job on this if we're constantly having to rush and, and go through huge packets in three and four days. We need more time with materials so that we can properly research and ask questions, so that we do the people's business in the best manner possible. And so those are some of the things I'm looking at on, and I sent you some of the thoughts I had on two dash twenty-nine and two dash thirty. On two dash thirty, there is one item that needs to be cleaned up on the order of business, and that had to do with code section two dash forty-one, when the mayor and the council president is gone. We need to appoint a an official to run the meeting in their stead, and that needs to take place before we start approving agenda and conducting business. So the suggestion was made to move that from five B to two B, so that we take care of that at the beginning of the meeting before we start conducting business. Right now, we have to conduct several items of business before we have anyone running the meeting. So that was just a fix, and I've run that by Tim, and he agrees that that needs to happen. So it gave us an opportunity to do that. I've also added an agenda item on there for city council, or councilmen requests. That way, councilmen can request items on the agenda, and we have a place to put those items on the agenda. So that was the, the items on two dash thirty. As far as two dash twenty-nine, like I said, it was just trying to get to that timing, and I put it as a discussion item tonight. So you guys can tell me, how do you want it to read, so that we set this up, so that it works for everybody, so we can do the best work possible for the people.
Sabrina, did you want to add something?
Well, just with what he said about two dash forty-one, or I think that's what he said. The way I interpret that, because it states that the city clerk opens the meeting, and then a, a, an official is elected at that point. No, at no time do we do anything before that. If you remember, when we did that here a couple of months ago, at no time did we do anything before the pledge or anything. We did that first, very first.
Right.
So, but you, so it's not, but it's not in, it wouldn't be five A like we did tonight. It was done first. At the very beginning, we didn't have it as an agenda item on the agenda at all. We did it first before. I mean, I just sat here and said, hey, per this, this code, you know, I open it. So I, I guess I don't understand why that is an issue.
Well, my discussion with the city attorney was to tridewell line two dash thirty and two dash forty-one.
Mr. Modri, did you have a question?
No, just some discussion on what you have here. You're, you've proposed reducing the timeframes by which councilmembers submit ordinances, resolutions, and then city staff. I don't know how that helps get things going earlier and giving us more, more time. I, I would think if you wanted to do anything, you'd go the other way, but I think I'm okay with the three weeks and two weeks.
Mr. Mendy Melli?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Modri. That opens up a good discussion. If you'd pass those down, Mr. Preister. Providing a copy of City Council Meeting Preparation Policy Resolution Number Nine, which provides that councilmembers can submit items under the, under the rules that are stated therein. I think Mr. Modri is a perfect example. He provided information relative to the pet advocacy program that was discussed this evening following this resolution, and there was no hiccups. The item is on the agenda. We had the presentation. We had the item. We'll have a public hearing at the next meeting, and it can be adopted. Bill, we're getting some squelch. Can you, oh, there it is. It's that one?
So I, that might be a recommendation, retain those timeframes to.
Retain three weeks and two weeks.
Yes.
But then would the city start holding their meeting two weeks, so that the items are on the agenda two weeks in advance? To meet the statute or the city code?
I think the city staff needs the flexibility to address the community's needs and preparation of the agenda. Well, you had an item here this evening that you suspended the rules to address a concern of a citizen who needed a timely response. We have the same kind of requirements that we need to face when we're preparing the agenda. So we need, we need the time to, to get it as close to the meeting, the finalization of the agenda as possible, so that we can include as many items as can be addressed. The first paragraph of that sentence, or that resolution that I just provided, says that the agendas will be distributed to the city council on the Wednesday preceding the regularly scheduled Monday meeting. I know Sabrina works very hard to get that done. Occasionally, there are items that do come out late, but those are oftentimes addressed with a special attention and the communication that identifies why it's late, what the changes are, et cetera.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. After reading, you know, the proposal and reading these ordinances and our policy and stuff, I don't see where there is a need for change. And I, unless I'm missing something here, you, you want to get it to us quicker, but you want to, you want to reduce the time for staff. I mean, to me, I think we're pulling on one end and pushing on the other.
Okay, so we can leave it at three and two.
Okay.
But we need to get it at two then.
Well, the, the, no, how, then you're cutting him down. Still a week is what I'm saying, is that. What I'm saying is, is our policy says it's out by the Wednesday before our meeting. I think it might even refer to a time by four o'clock, and I know there are times, very seldom, but I know there are times where we do hear, hey, I'm going to get something, I'll give it to you the next day. But I don't think it's been anything of a very long and detailed document. It's just pretty much something I think most times, unless I'm wrong, it's pretty minor.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I always appreciate streamlining and making things easier, and we do get things sometimes at the last minute, and we do have a lot to read, and more than it appears when we're here to the general public watching. However, I, I think one of the big things that we're doing here is putting the city clerk in a very awkward position because as I read the changes, it directs the city clerk to do everything. It takes out the language that the city administrator has oversight, and I think that's a serious change. We hire an administrator to administer all of the functions of the city along with the mayor and the administration. So it's really his charge and responsibility to put it together in conjunction with the clerk. The clerk does it, but it has to be approved. Somebody has to be a gatekeeper and to take that out and to put the clerk in an awkward position of being. It, it is red, so I assume I'm on? It may be that defective wiring again. But getting back to my train of thought, I think it's an awkward position to have two masters. The city clerk is essentially having to listen to the council in what she's directed to do, and she's really directed by the city administrator. So I don't know if that was intended, but as I read the changed language, I think that's a consequence that would be very concerning. And I would also add, I, I worked as a clerk in the city of Omaha, and I know this is no situation unique to Bellevue. and I know this is no situation unique to Bellevue. Agendas change, agendas get items at the last minute, and councils have to adjust. It's not always easy, it's good if we can find better ways, but that's the nature of doing government work.
I agree. And, and I'm just trying to get what we're doing into the city code. And right now, the city code two dash twenty-nine says things are supposed to be done two weeks before the meeting, and we're not doing that. So, I just thought we should change the city code to match what we're doing.
And sometimes that's the case, but it's because situations come up. I don't think it's, I haven't seen where something was intended to go against our rules. But sometimes, the nature of situations, emergencies, people coming in, causes it.
This, Mr. Cook.
The way I read two dash twenty-nine A, it says all new ordinances and new resolutions.
Right.
And a lot of those have to maybe go to our city legal, we need some help. I can't write in ordinance, I can't write that to make sure we get all the bases covered. So I think part of that is, so if it has to go to city legal, that they have time to look at it. Then it says, all reports, communication, ordinance, and then it talks about more stuff that has to come two weeks in to advance. So we get a lot of stuff on there that's not a resolution or ordinance. So, I guess what I was trying to say earlier, if you push up a week where Sabrina has to give it to us a week earlier, you're cutting everything, you're saying then, well, when you get, the ordinance says, we got a week and a half before we got to get it to the council, and you get everything else, you got three days to get it to the council. That's what you're telling me. And that's not going to work.
That's what we're doing right now?
No, no.
We're getting it to us three and four days before.
No, that's right. So, well, then, then let's deal with getting the stuff on the Wednesday. But don't say, if you say she has to give it to us a week earlier, you're shutting everything else down by a week.
Right, okay.
That's what I was saying, is that you're, you're, you're taking a timeframe here, and you're doing this to get it done. And I'm saying you can't get it done in that timeframe.
Okay. Then, then all I'm saying is, let's make the city code do, say what we're actually doing.
I think it does.
It doesn't. It says everything will be on the agenda two weeks out, and we're getting everything the Wednesday before the meeting.
It says it will be to the clerk. Three, either three weeks if it's a new ordinance or a new resolution, the other stuff is two weeks. Sabrina, do you agree or disagree?
I hear, I get what you're saying. I'm, guess I'm just confused as to what Mr. Shannon is proposing. But, I mean, yeah, so like, Mr. Modri submitted his pet thing, and we had it, you know, a good three weeks ago. We, we knew that he wanted it for the December eleventh meeting, that's what he was planning, or that's what he had asked for. And that was fine, because we were prepared for it. That way, they could make sure it was correct. Everything was correct, legal had looked at it, and we were ready to go with it, so.
Mr. Manjimelli.
Let me read from section two dash twenty-nine what it actually says, so we're not confused. All reports, communications, ordinances, resolutions, contract documents, or other matters to be placed on a council agenda must be submitted in their proposed form to the city administrator by noon on the Monday that is two weeks prior to the council meeting, at which time the item is to be discussed. That does not say that it has to be presented to the city council. It is presented to the city administrator for placement on the agenda at that point.
This is a discussion-only item, correct?
Discussion-only, yes.
Are there any other questions or more discussion?
I just make comments.
Mr. Sullivan.
A, a lot of the items that are administratively driven do get to the meeting, if you will, for the agenda on that Monday or Tuesday before the meeting. But those are administratively driven things that have internally already been vetted out by administration. If something comes in that isn't administratively vetted, if you will, already, that extra time is needed, because there may be things, just because you're not in the day-to-day administration of things, that you don't know that, that what you're proposing creates a conflict with this, that, or the other, and maybe legal department or Public Works has to look at it, or we've got some other issue with code enforcement, and those things work together. But when this, when the council, when things are being brought before that agenda meeting by administration, that vetting process has already been going on for a while. And that by the time it gets there, it's pretty much done. And at least to the point of being proposed to the council.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Preister.
Just one thing, and I didn't verify that this is our current rule. So, it does include the B, which refers, I believe, to pre-council meetings. And that is the one thing that we could eliminate, because we no longer have a pre-council meeting. So I, I think there's some validity to looking at these things. I, in terms of structure, the way you've got A, B, C, D, I mean, it's organized, that kind of thing is nice. But I think we really need staff input, particularly the clerk and the administration, before we would move ahead with any other changes. And maybe Mr. Buckley has some comments.
Yeah, Mr. Preister, the copy of the code section that's in the packet is unfortunately an outdated one. The subsection B was removed at the time we eliminated the pre-council meetings. And that also raised an interesting point that Councilman Shannon brought up to me earlier in the week about how our city code is updated on the website, as well as the bound volumes. Unfortunately, it's not automatic, it's not immediate. So, but yes, that, that section was taken out already regarding pre-council meetings.
Thank you for that clarification. I thought we had, but when I see it here, it raises the question, so I'm glad for the clarification.
And, and this is nothing against Sabrina, because she's working on the issue, but the city code that we have is years out of date. I mean, trying to go look up the city code, the books that Thomas and I were given a year ago, those are all out of date. The, what's online, I've run into three different city codes this week that came up for discussion, where they were, I, you know, what's online is wrong, it's already been changed, it's out of date. So, it's something that Sabrina's working on this coming year to try to get that fixed. But, yeah, it's something we're going to have to be very careful of till it is fixed, because, like I said, I got caught three times this week on various city codes that are out of date.
Mr. Manjimelli.
I was just going to ask Sabrina to comment. You, you do have a code recodification item in the agenda, or excuse me, in the budget for this year?
Yes, in the budget, it was something I asked for specifically, because I knew it was going to cost a chunk of money. So, I asked specifically for that, knowing that it would, would needed to be done, that there were a lot of things that needed to be recodified in there. So, and I spoke with Mr. Shannon about that, so, yeah. And unfortunately, they, even though we send them the ordinances, they won't do an update on our cod, our code company. They won't do an update on the website. You'd think it'd be easy, but they won't do that unless they're doing a paper at the same time. So, so, kind of, just a long process, unfortunately.
Maybe we need to shop a little better.
Well, it's the same company we've had for a long time, I think. I'd, not that that's a good reason, but it's not cheap.
Let's find a company that can do both.
Get you to address one more thing, please. You told me that somewhere on the website, there is a place where people could go find the new codes that are not incorporated into the city code link?
Yes, there is a section under city clerk called non-codified ordinances. And if you go there, that's where I put them. If it's something that affects the code. And there's also on the municipal webs, when you go to the city code on their, the website, the municipal website, there's a section there, there's a sentence that says something about, make sure you check here for anything. Unfortunately, they're not really organized that well on there. I don't think they're like in alphabetical order or anything like that, but they are there, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Great, moving on to item number fourteen, Administrator's Report. Comments must be limited to items on the current report. Are there any questions for Mr. Manjimelli, Mr. Shannon?
Question for Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burke, in your report, you say that you're looking at trying to fix the processes in permitting and getting things out of permitting in a timely manner?
Yeah, we're, due to the storm and some issues between the plan review and some things of that nature, where we were going to plan a process improvement, see if there's anything that we can streamline, eliminate some duplicated steps or something of that nature. Just checking in to see if there's anything we can do to prove it, improve it.
Okay, because I've got, well, I've had multiple requests, but I've got one constituent right now that had his permit for his garages for his apartments in for eight weeks, and he's still waiting, and he didn't hear anything till five weeks in, and they requested more data. And now he's three weeks and still hasn't heard, so, yeah, it seems like there's some delays.
If that gentleman could contact me or Mike Christensen, we'll check in to see where the, the permit is or the plan review is, and, and give him an update on it.
All right.
It's just one of the, just an observation on, on the, the discussion earlier. In process improvement, you usually go by the eighty-twenty principle, where you're trying to develop a process around eighty percent of the actions that happen during that time. And then you can't really develop one for the twenty percent, because they're so unique. So, maybe, maybe that might be an issue that you can consider as well, is maybe the, the process now fits that eighty percent, but we're seeing more of that twenty percent come up a little more often.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Modri.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I had a question along the same lines. Here, a couple of months ago, we had an issue where someone had called in to Public Works, and they, you know, and they should have contacted permits. And so there was kind of a communications problem of them being able to refer them to the right place and that. Are you looking at something in that area too, to have a process there to?
Um, well, you know, we list all the contact numbers online. We also have a developer's guide that's online as well, that an individual can save on their computer or even stop in the offices, and that has all the contact numbers on it as well. Whenever someone calls the wrong number and then gets transferred or is told to call a different number, that's always a confusion. So, sometimes that's hard to prevent.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Administration Report? Thank you, Mr. Burks. Moving on to item number fifteen then, Public Request to Be Heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number Thirty-five Regarding the Principles of Conduct and Decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city official and employees, or member of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual is so attacked as an elected official, city official or employer, member of the general public. And City Code Section Two Dash Six Eight, Regarding the Matters of Addressing the Council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentations to five minutes, please.
Good evening, Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. First of all, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. See, this is the last meeting for the year. I was told if I tell you I want my website on, on the minutes, all I have to do is say that. My website is chuckfrederick.com. Other years I've done this before, kind of my wish list of things that I wish would be done this coming year. And I'll list a few of them right now. Dog Park in southwest Bellevue, I think we need one there. I've offered to be in the committee to get that going. Also, start on what we have to do to become an all-American city. That would attract more businesses here, and it's a process, but if we don't start on it, we won't get going. We need Charlie Jensen to come down here from the State Auditor's Office and do a, do a, and do an audit for us. We need a full-time city employee, city attorney. We need to have a monthly balance sheet every month. And we also need to get started on the, on the, on a new library that should have been started a long time ago. If I understand right, what happened tonight, and I'm not a hundred percent clear, but it sounded like you voted to tear down Pat Shannon's car wash. And he didn't have a chance to speak, which I don't, I don't understand that why a person who has property, whether he's elected official or not, can't get up and defend himself, at least discuss what he has. But here are some of the things that, that I know you councilpeople got, but the audi, but the, but the public didn't get this information. And there was some questions asked to Pat Shannon, and one was based on, based on ground now freezing, we would begin construction approximately April two thousand eighteen and finish by the end of September, October two thousand eighteen. In interim, we would have our architect complete constructional drawings, submitting plans, and applying for permits. The construction would generate approximately twenty jobs during the construction period. Car wash will generate three jobs, one person doing cleaning, one person doing maintenance, one person doing bookkeeping, in addition to contracted services for lawn care, snow removal, cameras, network, et cetera. Revenues at this car wash are projected to be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Sales tax revenues generated would be about twelve thousand six hundred dollars per year. Real estate taxes would be approximately sixty-five hundred dollars per year, and the personal property taxes would be approximately two thousand dollars per year. I don't think we're in a position to, to turn down businesses. We're getting, businesses going to Papillion, La Vista, even Gretna, they're, they're not coming here. Instead of trying to make somebody for, for individual purposes, individual reasons that aren't appropriate to stop a business from coming in here, it's just ludicrous. I just don't understand that, and I, I think we have to start thinking about what's best for Bellevue, and what's, how we get more revenue in here. Thank you.
Chuck, can I get that website address one more time?
Mine?
Yes.
Chuckfrederick.com.
Thank you so much.
F-R-E-D-R-I-C-K.
My name is Michael Wills. I live at thirteen twenty-one Harrison Street here in Bellevue. The first thing I'd like to ask, and I know you can't answer, but maybe we can, somebody, I'll get ahold of somebody tomorrow. But how far, for the general public to put, submit, to get something on the agenda, how far in advance do we need to have those submitted? And how detailed are those supposed to be as to what we want on the agenda? The second thing is, let me say, I'm a constituent of Pat Shannon's. I do not have a business relationship with him. I don't ask him over to my house for barbecues or anything like that. But it so happens that I get my cleaning done over there, just around the corner from his car wash. And I stopped by there the other day, because I was honestly wanting to figure, look at this for myself and see what's going on there. Well, what I saw was a whole bunch of concrete blocks, and I called Mr. Shannon on it. And I said, what in the heck is all those concrete blocks? And he explained that, because it looked like vandalism to me, I'll be honest. And he explained- I'll be honest. And he explained that there were four pallets, I think it was four pallets, of concrete block that he had had on site to do some work. And before he got the permits, local kids had brusted them up. And I don't know why they do that, but kids are stupid at times and do stupid things. Like I said, I'm not, I, I think that if, he should be given a chance, a, a little bit longer, let's say, you know, I don't know how much longer, but by the paperwork I was given, sounds like he has a, a, a good plan if he gets the permits and everything. I would also like to say that the people in the city clerk's office are some of the most fantastic employees you've got in this city. I can, I don't know how many times in the last six months, three months, that I have either called or walked in and asked for guidance, and they've given it to me within the purview of their job. I had a problem with my computer. I couldn't print off tonight's agenda. I walked in there tonight, and they were nice enough to print off the items that I, not the, everything on the agenda, but just what I needed and what I asked for. So, I really think they're doing a wonderful job there in the, in the clerk's office. Other than that, that's all I've got for tonight. Thanks a million. You all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Are there others? See none. Moving on to item number sixteen for closed session. Mr. Burns.
I move that the city council go into closed session at this time for protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session shall be an update on BPD litigation. The following individuals will be included in closed session. Joe Mangiomele, Pat Sullivan, Tim Buckley, Molly Miller, Acting Chief Dave Stuckenholtz.
Need a second.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Cook. Thank you. After announcing the items, the city council has voted to go into closed, no, got a vote for it. Motion to second. Discussion, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. The city council has voted to go into closed session at this time. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session will be the update on BPD litigation. Following individuals be included in the closed session. Joe Mangiomele, Patrick Sullivan, Tim Buckley, Molly Miller, Acting Chief Dave Stuckenholtz, and the council.